Okay, so our time's 5:31. I don't know if we have any other participants. It doesn't look like it, but we'll go and start. So, good evening. My name is Michael Elsalde, the grants administrator for the City of Mission. On behalf of the City of Mission, we'd like to welcome everyone tuning in, and we look forward to your comments and discussions at the end of our brief presentation. As a reminder, this presentation is being recorded and will be uploaded to our city website for those of you unable to tune in live. Because this is a virtual public hearing, we ask that everyone participating remain on mute until you're given the opportunity to speak so that we are courteous to our presenters. So on the agenda this evening, we have several topics that will provide a general overview of the federal grant opportunity and the development of our proposal. First, we'll be discussing the purpose of public hearing, CDBG mitigation funding competitions, the use of the CDBG mitigation funding, eligible project examples, City of Mission proposed project, and then we'll be opening it up to public comment periods. So first, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or otherwise known as HUD, allocated $4,297,189,000 in CDBG mitigation funds to the state of Texas. These funds were divided into 11 major CDBG mitigation programs. Three of these programs include the program of this evening's topic. The 2015 declared major flood disasters, which $46,950,000 was allocated for the CDBG mitigation program. The Texas General Land Office, otherwise known as GLO, has been designated by Governor Greg Abbott to administer CDBG mitigation funds on behalf of the state of Texas. The purpose of today's public hearing is to provide individuals who have been directly or indirectly impacted by the 2015 floods an opportunity to ask questions about the goals of the CDBG mitigation funding, two, review the potential projects for the city, and three, provide comments regarding the projects identified to serve and protect the city from future disaster events. As a reminder, opportunities to ask questions and provide comments will follow this presentation. Comments will be accepted both orally and in writing during the online public hearing. Following the public hearing, comments will continue to be accepted until October 16, 2020. Those comments can be submitted to myself by mail, addressed to Michael Elsalde, grants administrator, at 1201 East Eighth Street, Mission, Texas, 78572, or by email at grants@missiontexas.us. And as a reminder, we'll be monitoring all submissions in the comment box for those who choose to participate through the response, and will be provided an answer before closing of our presentation. For the purpose of today's public hearing, we'll be discussing the 2015 flood state mitigation competition. Per the 2015 federal and presidential disaster declarations of DR 4245 and DR 4223, the city is eligible to submit its proposal for funding under its competitive grant. So here we'll see a map of the state of Texas showcasing Hidalgo, highlighted there, that's eligible for the 2015 flood state mitigation competition. Next, we'll be discussing the use of CDBG mitigation funds. The CDBG mitigation funding opportunity requires that all activities meet mitigation definitions as provided by HUD. HUD defines mitigation as "those activities that increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage, and loss of property, and suffering in hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters." All proposed activities must support the overall mitigation project, and the overall project meets the CDBG mitigation national objective that have either an urgent mitigation need or comprise a 51% or more of low-to-moderate income individuals. On this slide, we wanted to highlight the list of CDBG mitigation program project examples as provided by the Texas General Land Office. The development of our project follow follow the samples of question identification such as, what is the identified hazard? Under our scope of activity, that would be flooding from storms. And here you'll see the example of activities from flood controls and drainage improvements. Shortly, we'll be going over some of the activities provided in our grant proposal, which will fall directly under this flood control and drainage improvements. The City of Mission completed its comprehensive storm drainage assessment early this year and identified over 72 flood mitigation projects over the next course of 10 years. The projects were ranked based on three major criteria: addressing flooding complaints, floodplain area reductions, and floodplain property reduction. The following is an overview of the selected projects from the adopted City of Mission master drainage plan. Phase one by priority. The total estimated cost for these projects is $9,864,710. The CDBG mitigation program is highly competitive and ranks on the scoring criteria. The minimum recommended cash match is 1%, which for the purpose of a competitive proposal, the City of Mission recommended for commitment. Next, I'll be shifting the presentation over to our city engineer department to provide the details of each proposed project.
Hi, good afternoon. This is JP Terrazas. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
My use yours. Good afternoon. This is JP Terrazas, city engineer for the City of Mission, as Mr. Michael Elsalde mentioned. I'll be talking about, give a little brief status on the four projects that we're applying for, which is Stewart Road, Glasgow Road, Sherry, and Sunset. So Stewart, and just to give a little history on this, of how we decided and and how we picked this project, as you all know, due to the torrential rains and also the hurricanes that we experienced in 2018, our mayor and city council took action. So we hired a Texas infrastructure engineering group to do a drainage assessment throughout the City of Mission, and that's what we're using right now to apply for all these grants to help out with some alleviate some of the drainage around the city. So Stewart is one of a project that we have in mind, where we've been receiving a lot of phone calls and also a lot of people got affected that got about a foot and a half to two feet of water inside their homes. So right now, we're applying for this grant. So in this project, as you can see on the screen, there's a Stewart A, which is basically from just north of Business 83 to north of 495. And all this water drains into the Mission lateral. So the Mission lateral, as we speak, is being excavated out, if you will, by the drainage district. So the drainage district owns the Mission lateral, which I want to say about 65, 70% of Mission drains into. So the contractor right now started from Benson in McAllen, Benson Palm. And they're going all the way to Glasgow. That's phase one. So they've broken down these sections in four phases. So phase two is from Glasgow to Inspiration, I'm sorry, to Conway, and then phase three is from Conway to Inspiration Road, and from Inspiration Road all the way to city limits on the west side. That's where they're going to be excavating this lateral, Mission lateral, which at the end of the day, all these subdivisions in the City of Mission drains into. So they're going to be adding, I want to say, about two or three times more capacity in volume. So this is going to help out tremendously. It's going to alleviate a lot of the flooding throughout the area. So Stewart A, we're proposing to upsize the pipe. So everything that you see in red, let me see if I can point it out with a mouse here. So right here, everything that you see here in red, it's proposing to upsize the pipe, to, of course, to a bigger pipe to capture more water and have more detention underneath the road, which is basically, that's what the water, the pipe does. And where you see here, the dash area, the dash lines, so those that were extending pipe to those subdivisions. So also, we're proposing to acquire an area by the church, their own Stewart, in front of Birdwell Park, which is approximately an acre to also to use it as detention before it goes to the drainage to alleviate some of that water. Oh, next, and we have a Glasgow, also Glasgow, we have experienced some flooding on those areas, which is Springfield subdivision and and all those subdivisions has experienced in flooding problems. So also from here, it's from Business 83 north and from 495, which is East Griffin Parkway, to the north. So also here, we're upsizing the pipe to a bigger pipe, of course. And this project is about $2.2 million. I'm sorry, $2.4 million. Next, we have a Sherry, Sherry project, which is Sherry B, which is from it's also from north of Business 83 all the way to all the way to Mile 2. So Sherry B, it's composed of a Stone Gates subdivision where for that area, we have received a lot of phone calls and also where where we, the city, have been taking care of a detention pond that is there, existing detention pond. We cleaned it, we winded, and we also connected it to Sherry to add more capacity. So that's what we did since 2018. We were proactive in winding a lot of our ditches and cleaning all of our inlets. So here also, we're upsizing the pipe and adding extra pipe for for detention and better drainage. And last but not least, is the Sunset. It's a Sunset Street, which is just north of also Business 83, between Business 83 and 495, in the vicinity of the Benworth, Benworth Park, also known as El Parque de los Patos. So also this area, we're going to be adding a pipe to Sunset Lane and and this street, as you see on the here in the map, the, right here where I'm pointing at, all this is going to be new pipe, new addition of pipe. And what you see in red, running up and down, north and south, that's going to be upsize in the pipe. And this project is going to be approximately approximately $3.3 million. So also, a lot of the, this water is going to go into the last pine ditch, which we already winded a section of it. So that section was winding like in Sherry Pond Valley and also in the Glenwood subdivisions. So that area had already been winded, those ditches. Right now, we're working on winding the ditch close to Taylor Road. And as you all know, the City of Mission has been working with Texas, in local agreements and AFAs to expand Taylor Road from the expressway all the way to Mile 2, but it's broken down in two phases. So phase one should start next summer, summer of 2021, which we're about 90% done on the design. So eventually, all this water drains into Taylor Road, which we're going to be adding drainage and more pipe. And hopefully, by next summer, we'll start construction for Taylor Road. And that's all I have on my end. I will turn it over to Mr. Michael Elsalde.
Okay, so those are the projects that are provided for this grant program. So here we have individuals who would like to provide public comments. They'll be given each three minutes to speak. And like I said, just be courteous to those who may be speaking, if we have anyone listening in. Those wishing to speak are also encouraged to send a written copy of their comments, and this is to my email, grants@missiontexas.us. Written public comments, please label them CDBG MIT so we can better identify them. May also be submitted by either email, grants@missiontexas.us, or by mail, attention, Michael Elsalde, Mission City Hall, 1201 East Eighth Street, Mission, Texas, 78572. Now, the deadline for submissions of all comments, all public comments, is going to be Friday, October 16, 2020, at 5 o'clock PM. So with that being said, we appreciate your participation, and we'd like to currently now open this up to any public comments.
Hello.
Well, yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Carlos. Yeah, I just, I wanted to check out the presentation. I know it's like, not a whole lot of people here, but I saw like the link on the mission website, so I figured I'd check it out. Um, yeah, and because I worked with, as a census enumerator this past, these past few months, and like, when I spoke to a lot of people, I heard that, like, a lot of people, some of the top things on their mind had been like flooding and like fixing like drainage and stuff. Um, so I'm just like glad to see that it's like had some, had some traction and like improvement in the works and stuff. Um, and I just had like a question, like, in terms of like these sort of projects, how much or how long does it take from like the planning stage up until completion?
Good afternoon, Mr. Carlos. Thank you for your question. This is JP Terrazas, city engineer for the City of Mission. So basically, we look into hiring consultant for the design stage, which it takes approximately anywhere from six months to eight months. That construction, it will take approximately from 12 months to 18 months.
Okay, okay, see. And then you guys are right now past the planning stage?
No, no, no. Right now, we did a feasible, feasible study, and also we did a master plan, which we hired a Texas infrastructure group to do the master plan. So which is helping us tremendously to, so we could apply for all these grants. So once you have a master plan in place throughout the city, we can use this for, to apply for grants. And we have applied like for this grant and also for trophy funds.
I see.
So we're taking advantage of all these grants because, honestly, I mean, the city cannot do all these projects at once. We have so much, we can only use so much of our, or your taxpayers' money.
Yeah, the budget.
Yeah, so that's why we're reaching out to other sources or other entities to help out with these projects.
I see. And for, like, I had checked, like, after I spoke to a lot of people about this, that they had said, like, some of the issues that were on their mind, what other sources of funding are available for the city? Like, when you can't use tax money and stuff? Like, does the City of Mission use a lot of, what's it called, like municipal bonds?
We're, we're getting ready to go out for certificate of obligation bonds, which we're having a workshop tomorrow. And our mayor and council are going to discuss, we have a list of projects that we're going to apply for, and that workshop we're having tomorrow to discuss those certificate of obligation grants.
Is that an open meeting, like, to the public?
Yes, I believe so. If you go into our website, you can download the Zoom link and join us through there.
Okay. And is that, like, some other thing? I know this is like, this isn't like super relevant to the drainage and stuff, but some other things that I had, that people told me when I was like, with the census, was a lot of houses and a lot of like colonias and neighborhoods, they don't have really good, like, lighting with, like, the streetlights. Um, so I know this might not be like the same department as, you know, drainage and like Public Works or something, but how, how could, like, what would need to be done to kind of, like, address that? Or like, you know, get some streetlights where there's no streetlights?
And what is this area, I'm sorry?
Um, like, here in, here in the city in Mission, there were some areas that I went to as a, when I was with the census, and when I spoke to, when I spoke to people, they said that, like, they don't have streetlights, like, the lamp posts. So then at night, there's not a lot of visibility. And that's what I saw as well. Like, I would go late at, late at night, and there's not a whole lot of visibility. So what, what would, like, the city need to do to kind of get some, some streetlights in some of these not lit areas?
So, so right now, we have a, a team, we have a team, if you will, that goes out there quarterly and checks out all the subdivisions, and we documented all the light poles that are off, and we reported to the respective light company, whether AEP or Magic Valley. So we keep, we keep a list of all the streetlights that are not functioning. And also, we, we also receive complaints and things like that, and subdivisions, that they don't have enough lighting. So what we do, we do go out there and assess the area, and we apply through, if it's AP or Magic Valley, we go apply with them and to request more lighting. So I would encourage you, whoever you talk to, to come by the office and give us your subdivision name or the street, so we can go look at it and assess the area and make a determination and send it to the AEP or Magic Valley, whoever services the area.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, and what's your address, Mr. Ayala?
I'm from 2202 Turtle Court. It's like between Glasgow and Sherry, but it's not, it's not my subdivision. It's, it's other subdivisions that I, like, for people that I spoke with, I know one subdivision. Um, I don't remember the exact row, like, the exact address. Um, but let me see on Google Maps. But it was, I want to say, close to, um, Sherryland High School, there was a, like, a subdivision there that I went, and there was no lamp post. So it's not from my house, right? It's just some of the people that I, that I spoke with. Um, they, they didn't have a whole lot of of, what's it called, like, lights near their house and stuff, so. I want to say it was, I want to say it was School Lane, uh, Flamingo Avenue, if I'm not mistaken, just from like Google Maps and from what I remember.
Okay.
So on, on Flamingo Avenue, like, at the end of the street, um, yeah, I want to say this one. If you go in, it's like a, it's a cul-de-sac, and then there's no lamp post there. So I went kind of late at night, and, I mean, I only went once, right? But I would assume for the people that live there, it could be kind of a hassle to be, um, you know, it's kind of dark and stuff and.
Yeah, no, no, definitely. I would send someone to go, I'm going to send somebody to go check the area and assess it to see how many light poles we need to add. And we'll look into it.
There were some there, and there was some further north, closer to the city limits. And I'm not sure if that's, because I spoke to some other people, and they said that even though that sometimes the, the address, like, technically says Mission, it's not really Mission. It was, um, I forgot. Like, all the way up closer to, what's it called, the, the more, the more airfield base or something?
Yeah, no, that's way, way north. Our city limit, it's all the way to two and a half mile.
Two and a half mile, let me see. Oh, okay. So it's oh, okay.
So over there, yeah, it's probably county.
They would be like a county level thing?
Yes.
Okay, I see. Yeah, then it would just be like those. I mean, that's a lot of the people that I, that I talked to. That's a, like, the drainage and the, the lights, that's a, that's a big thing that I heard from people.
Yes, and, and also, we're trying to go out for certificate of obligations on on streets and sidewalks. We, we want to close the continuity on sidewalks to have better access, like, if there's a school or a park to, and there's a gap of sidewalk in between. We're assessing those areas also to, to come up with an estimate and apply for those certificate of obligations also.
And those certificate of obligations, are those kind of like, is that similar to like, like a bond that would be issued in the city?
Yes, that is correct. It's, we pay, the city pays a low percentage on them. And we take advantage of the low percentage rate, and that's how we go about and do these projects.
And would, would that be available to, like, people in the city, or, like, who would that be sold to? Or like, who's it?
For the City of Mission. For the organization of the City of Mission.
So who, who does the city sell it to?
No, we apply for it. We, we don't sell it to anybody. We, we apply it through, either through a bank or through investors or things like that. So we apply it through them. We we apply for some, so many millions. I don't, I'm not sure how many millions we're going to apply for. That's, we're going to find out tomorrow. And that's where we're going to determine which are the more critical projects and feasible projects that we can accomplish with that kind of money.
And like, the, the investors are like, like, big, big investors, not like an individual person?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just making sure, because, um, like, I had seen that, and I was wondering if, if the city had, like, bonds that, like, a person could, could help out with and stuff? Um, like, like a small amount of money, but if, if we're talking like millions of dollars, now, I don't, I don't have that kind of money.
Yeah, no, no, we're applying for millions.
Okay, okay.
That's the only way that we can do something that is going to be noticeable. Because trust me, a million dollars doesn't take you that far.
Yeah.
So like, like I said, some of these projects are two and a half million, two million, so. So we're, we're applying for a lot of money.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Um, yeah, I think that was, that was it. That was just like the two comments, or like the, the stuff that I just wanted to mention. Just ask some questions on.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ayala, for your time, and those were very, very good questions. We also keep in mind those streetlights. We will send someone to assess the area and put it on our list.
Thank you, guys. It means a lot to me.
Thank you so much. You have a wonderful day. Thank you for participating.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, if we have anybody else who would like to participate or submit any comments at this time, we're Okay, if we have anybody else who would like to participate or submit any comments at this time, we're accepting them. And we'll keep this open for a few more minutes. Okay, so if there is no more comments at this time, we will be ending our first session and waiting for our next public hearing, which we will discuss another grant opportunity with the General Land Office for similar grant mitigation with the community development block grant uh for for a different funding type. So if you wanted to, please stay for the six thirty P M meeting. Thank you. Okay, we'll be beginning our six thirty P M presentation. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Elizalde, Grant Administrator for the City of Mission. On behalf of the City of Mission, we would like to welcome everyone tuning in. And we look forward to your comments and discussions at the end of our brief presentation. As a reminder, this presentation is being recorded and will be uploaded to our city website for those of you unable to tune in live. Because this is a virtual public hearing, we ask that everyone participating remain on mute until you are given the opportunity to speak so that we are courteous to our presenters. On the agenda this evening, we have several topics that will provide a general overview of the federal grant opportunity and the development of our proposal. First, we'll be discussing the purpose of this public hearing. Then C D B G mitigation funding competition. Then we'll be discussing the use of the C D B G mitigation funding. Eligible project examples. Then the city of Mission proposed projects. And finally, we'll open up to public comment periods. Now we'll discuss the purpose for today's public hearing. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, allocated four billion two hundred ninety seven million one hundred eighty nine thousand in C D B G mitigation funds to the state of Texas. These funds were divided into eleven major C D B G mitigation programs. Three of those programs include the program of this evening's topic. The two thousand sixteen declared major flood disasters, which one hundred forty seven million six hundred eighty that eighty thousand seven hundred sixty was allocated for the C D B G mitigation program. The Texas General Land Office, also known as G L O, has been designated by Governor Greg Abbott to administer C D B G mitigation funds on behalf of the state of Texas. The purpose of today's public hearing is to provide individuals who have been directly or indirectly impacted by the two thousand and sixteen flood disasters, an opportunity to, one, ask questions about the goals of the C D B G mitigation funding. Two, review the potential projects for the city. Three, provide comments regarding the projects identified to serve and protect the city from future disaster events. Opportunity to ask questions and provide comments will follow this presentation. Comments will be accepted both orally and in writing during the online public hearing. Following this public hearing, comments will continue to be accepted until Friday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty. Those written comments can be mailed to myself, Michael Elizalde, Grant Administrator at twelve oh one East Eighth Street, Mission, Texas, seven eight five seven two, or by email to grants@missionTexas.us. We will monitor all submissions in the comment box for those who choose to participate through that, and a response will be provided before closing of our presentation. For the purpose of today's public hearing, we'll be discussing the two thousand sixteen flood state mitigation competition. Per the two thousand sixteen federal and presidential disaster declarations of D R four two seven two, D R four two six nine, and D R four two six six, the city is eligible to submit its proposal for funding under this competitive grant. Here you'll see a map of the state of Texas, which highlights Hidalgo County here at the bottom. And that showcases our eligibility for the two thousand sixteen flood state competition. Next, we'll be discussing the use of C D B G mitigation funds. The C D B G mid-funding opportunity requires that all activities be mitigation definitions as provided by HUD. HUD defines mitigation as those activities that increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage and loss of property, and suffering and hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. All proposed activities must support the overall mitigation project and the overall project meets the C D B G mitigation national objective that have either an urgent mitigation need or are comprised of fifty one percent or more of low to moderate income individuals. We wanted to highlight the list of C D B G mitigation program project examples as provided by the Texas General Land Office. Surely, we'll be going over some of the activities provided in our grant proposal, which fall directly under the flood control and drainage improvements. Those sample sites are found here at the bottom of this sample example of this example, such as Site One being of retention ponds, Site Two with land retention areas, Site Three coverts, Site Four drainage improvements. Tonight, we'll be focusing on our drainage improvement project proposals. So here we have a list of our proposed projects. The City of Mission completed its comprehensive storm drainage assessment early this year and identified over seventy two flood mitigation projects over the course of the next ten years. The projects were ranked based on three major criteria: addressing flooding complaints, floodplain area reduction, and floodplain property reductions. The following is an overview of the selected projects from the adopted City of Mission Master Drainage Plan Phase Two by priority. The total estimated cost for these projects is ten million one hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty eight. The C D B G mitigation program is highly competitive and ranks on a scoring criteria. The minimum recommended cash match is one percent, which for the purpose of a competitive proposal, the City of Mission recommended for commitment. Next, I'll be shift shifting the presentation over to our City Engineer Department to provide the details for each of these proposed projects.
Thank you, Mr. Elizalde. Good afternoon. This is Juan Pablo Terraza, City Engineer for the City of Mission. And I'll be going over the five projects that we're applying. Uh project number one, uh Gabriel Project, which is in the vicinity of Inspiration and and north of four ninety five in the area of El Valle subdivision. So here, as you can see in the in the picture and the share screen, we're upsizing the pipe on these areas. All these red lines means that we're upside upsizing the pipe. And the dash areas where we adding extra inlet and extra pipes. Also, right now, we have a a project through the drainage district, which is winding the Mission lateral from city limits to city limits. The contractor already started Phase One, which is from Benson in the in the City McAllen, from Benson Palm all the way to Glasgow. I want to say the contractor is about forty percent completed, which they're winding the Mission lateral to add more capacity for water to be stored on that area. So the whole Mission lateral is broken down in four phases. So Phase Two has been already awarded to a contractor, which will be from Glasgow to Conway. And Phase Three is from Conway to Inspiration, and Phase Four is from Inspiration all the way to city limits. So the winding of this drainage, which I want to say sixty five percent of Mission drains into, is gonna help out Mission tremendously in alleviating some of these flooding problems that we have throughout the City of Mission. And also, the City of Mission is doing their part in applying for these grants and looking for their source of revenues so he can help out to to accomplish more projects. So that's Gabriel Street. Also, our second project is Spikes and and Jupiter. So this project, it's approximately five million dollars, or entails a winding of a detention pond. There's on the Spikes area, which is a the quadrant involves from Glasgow to Conway and from the expressway to Business Eighty Three. All this area is it's affected by the flooding, so all this area is in this same project. So which will be upsizing and also adding pipe through Conway and and all these subdivisions that are just north of the expressway and between Conway. So this is the older part of Mission where there is very little inlet and very little drainage. And all the all the water runs from Business Eighty Three to the expressway. It's about a ten-foot drop that all the water rush into this area and bottlenecks in the expressway. So that's why we're trying to get these detention ponds be widened and add extra capacity in this area. Our third project is the Guadalupe Project, which is in approximately one point six million dollars. One point six million dollars, which is in the vicinity of a of Conway between the expressway and a and Tom Landry, Business Eighty Three. So here also, we're proposing to add drainage and also upsize the existing pipe that we have in place. And also the crossing that we have on the expressway, because all this water bottlenecks in that area. So that's our proposed plan for Guadalupe. Our next project is the Stonegate Project, which is approximately one point four million dollars. This Stonegate Project, it's in the vicinity of Glasgow, between Glasgow and Stewart, and from four ninety five north to Mall Two. The city has been very proactive and already widened some of these ditches. And we're also proposing to do some of this winding in-house to alleviate some flooding on on these subdivisions. But as you can see on the on the share screen, all these red lines for we're up sizing the pipe and also adding extra pipe on some of the subdivisions will help tremendously and alleviate this flooding. But at the end of the day, all this drainage goes into the Mission lateral, which I was talking about a minute ago. So the Mission lateral, it it also is gonna just the Mission lateral itself will make a lot of improvements throughout the City of Mission. And that's all I have for for now, and I will turn it over to Mr. Michael Elizalde for more details.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Terrazas. So there you go. You have an overview of our grant proposal on those project details. So at this point, we'd like to open up the public comments. So just a brief overview before we go into public comment. Individuals who would like to provide public comments shall each be given three minutes to speak. Those wishing to speak are also encouraged to send a written copy of their comments to grants@missionTexas.us. All written public comments, please label them C D B G mitigation so we may be able to identify them easier. They also be submitted either through email at grants@missionTexas.us or by mail. Attention, Michael Elizalde, Mission City Hall, twelve oh one East Eighth Street, Mission, Texas, seven eight five seven two. The deadline for submissions on all public comments regarding the C D B G mitigation program and our proposals is due by October sixteenth, twenty twenty five P M. So with that being said, I'd like to open up to public comments. If anybody wishes to participate, please notify us by stating your name. And we will give it a few more minutes, but I do want to take this time to remind everyone that the public comment period will end October sixteenth, which is going to be a Friday at five P M. So if you could not make it and you're watching this through a recording on our website, which will be posted shortly after, uh please feel free to reach out and submit your public comments. They're very necessary to our grant proposal. And so it looks like we have no indication of any citizen participation. But like I said, if you're watching this through a recording, please feel free to reach out to us before October sixteenth, twenty twenty five P M. Uh we'll be more than happy to review your comments in writing or through email uh so that we we may address those appropriately through our proper channels uh and ultimately review them, you know, for our our grant proposal. So thank you for taking the time to watch and may you take care.